They need to speak about tonight.
Just everything, all of it.
Yeah.
Three items we had on the agenda.
All right, we are here, October twenty seven, twenty twenty five at five P M. We do have a quorum and I am calling this meeting to order. And first of all, public comments for this part of it, think we have any? And we'll go into our discussion.
All right, you guys, thank you again for coming for this. I promised I would keep it painless. And what I'm gonna do is, it's the same stuff that you provided before. I know we all kind of know what the problem is and what's going on, so I'm gonna skip those details and we'll just go straight to the potential recommendations for some changes for you to consider. So the first one we're gonna talk about is going to be the parking of oversized and commercial vehicles, trailers, boats or boat trailers in residential zone limited districts. If you turn to your packet on page six, I printed each of those out for you. They're under the reports. On page six, it does mention some possible edits that you could make to improve this based on some of the challenges we're having. And those changes include considering adding a maximum length. We've talked about the size of trailers based on capacity. There's research, the research in your staff report shows that most trailers are prior, they're categorized by length, and so I would recommend doing a length if you wanted to do this. And so I put an example of twenty feet in there for you. Another potential change you could consider is adding language to not allow these in the corner side yards. We do have some issues where currently they're allowed on both sides of the house, but if the side of the house is actually a corner and there's a street right there, it could potentially be a visibility issue. And so if we took that option out, we would add language to not allow it in the corner side yard, and that means it would need to be behind the front and side setbacks. And so I have diagrams to show you if you guys want to look through that. Third, you could include the language for oversized and commercial vehicles, trailers, boats or boat trailers. Right now, the ordinance that we're looking at only is affecting RVs parked at properties. It does not affect a trailer or a boat or a boat with a trailer. It's only for RVs. And so if there's any concern about having trailers parked in those parking spaces in the side yards, backyard, things like that, you would want to consider adding that language. And then lastly, there is not a definition for recreational vehicle in your parking ordinance, and so I would like to add one so that we have some added clarification when we go to enforce these. And so I've included that for you guys. So on page six, in the gray box, there is your original text in black. You will see green font where I've added language. You will see red with a strike through where I have removed language. And then yellow is some key points to discuss and determine if we want to do that. And so first, I want to see if we want to go ahead and consider adding some of this additional language that's mentioned here. You'll notice under section B where it reads, long-term parking or storage of any RV, adding in oversized and commercial vehicles, trailers, boats or boat trailers as defined in this section. And so that gives you a little bit more beef to that. Otherwise, it will only be for recreational vehicles when it comes to parking. So is there any thoughts on adding this language or not adding this language?
What do you call long-term parking?
You don't have it defined in there, but basically it means storage. Like if it's, you do have regulations that say that if it's in the act of loading or unloading, that it is allowed. And so none of this negates that. But if it's long-term and it's not being loaded or unloaded or, you know, actively being utilized aside from living, which is also not allowed. This would cover that.
Jeff, what's the proper language to define a eighteen-wheeler tractor? If you're putting it on, if you're putting it on an ordinance or something.
Any truck with a D O T sticker, which is a bobtail truck to a trailer, to me shouldn't be parked in the city limits.
But I mean, if she was gonna put something, okay.
A bobtail is what, thirty foot long, forty? But it's a D O T truck.
Anything like a like an army, we'd call it a deuce and a half, two tons.
Yeah, I just you know, occasionally I have seen an eighteen-wheeler tractor backed up in a driveway. And some, in some cases, this particular one would work some days and some days they wouldn't. On the days they worked, it'd fire that thing up at four o'clock in the morning with the headlights shining across the street at some, somebody else's house. And that went on for a number of years, but I didn't know if we shouldn't include something like that in this description.
You was talking about a bobtail and a buh.
Yeah, bobtail, anything that's
A pickup's commercial. I mean, I drive commercial.
But it doesn't receive, need a D O T.
Truck is D O T inspected, it's a one-ton. Right. And most of our pickups are one D O T inspected, you know. Right. Like a two-ton truck.
Well, and that's my, that's my argument too, because like for instance, long-term parking or storage. Well, the person that I keep on talking about that's on Fifth Street across from, from Ritz, he could consider that he doesn't long-term park. I park it there at night and the next morning I go to work. So that isn't storage or long-term parking, but he does it all the time. So something has to address that as well. I'm not really sure, I, I'm not one for coming up with language that covers all. Because this is talking specifically about parking long-term and storing. Not about parking overnight because I go to work in the morning with my eighteen-wheeler. And, and, and I'm not just talking about the tractor itself, it's the bed and the whole nine yards. I don't know how long that is. And it's parked on a residential property and it's jumping across your curb, which is sinking now, like I said it would. So it, I mean, it definitely needs to include that if you're long-term parking and storing something, but also just for overnight, I mean.
I think Jeff kind of nailed it. It's the size of the vehicle.
Has no business there at all unless, like you said, if you're bringing something in and unloading it for a minute, bringing furniture into your house or something like that.
Coming back from deer camp and unloading it, coming back on a Friday and unloading it on the weekend, something like that. Yes.
I was trying to look up our definitions while y'all were talking. I'm not gonna do it. But I will make sure I made a note. So we're saying we do not want eighteen-wheelers parked at a residential lot at all. Does that include cab and trailer or just trailer?
I thought, I personally thought we were kind of
I think we, we def, we do not allow them in the street. You have an existing ordinance that says they can't be parked in the street. Now, if that's the case, this is where it kind of crosses who enforces this, because remember, my team doesn't enforce everything. If it's an eighteen-wheeler parked in the street, that's a police department regulation there, and so we would have to send that to them. So that is already a rule. But with regards to parking it on a lot, I'm not gonna take up your time looking at this while we're talking, but I am gonna make a note so that when we do come back with this, that I address that for you. So cab and trailer.
What I had for you just said about one-ton truck, you know, wouldn't work, but I had changed the definition of commercial vehicle by adding any vehicle being used for the conduct of a commercial enterprise, but we'd need to put a weight definition in there, a commercial vehicle weighing two tons or more or something like that.
Okay, and are you available?
I would suggest by weight, go by D V W R, so that you run a registration on it, it'll, it'll have that on there.
That makes good sense.
That it makes, mention that specifically, because then we can do some research to get how it's registered.
There's a lot of Ford trucks up and down the road that are actually, you know, one-tons, you know, the dooleys and the pickups.
Yeah, you do see that on my lane for a while. I don't remember whose vehicle it was or exactly where it was, but for a good while, there was a big dooley with all the work rig on the back end of it now. And they parked, had to park it on the street and put the cones out and everything, but it took up half the street.
Right, right.
That's a good point about the size of the vehicle.
Big truck.
We can take a look at it. That first section sort of addresses that, but I'm gonna make sure I have the right language when I can sit down and just look at it.
If, if I may ask this question, because it was asked of me. We're modifying the current verb narrative, if you will. And, and so if some of the modification happens now that has been tolerated that has been tolerated in the past, I mean, where are we gonna get the biggest pushback? It's gonna be, it's not really gonna be the commercial vehicle. I don't really think so. It's going to be the RV, the boat and, and that type of thing. So if we have some, if we have past ordinance right now that is either allowing or we didn't have enough teeth to make any changes where there, are you gonna be able to go back and say, okay, now this is new, now you have to?
In this case, yes, but we wouldn't be able to make them put in the curb cut or the parking pad if it's existing. Because the city by state law would be required to pay for that curb cut and parking pad. So anytime we make a change that we require a property owner to come into compliance, it's at our cost by state law. So if there is, like what we did with this one when we initially adopted it is I did a three-month rollout where we had an information flyer in English and Spanish and when we saw RVs parked, we would knock on the door, leave a fire, talk to them, tell them what they had to, you know, so we weren't like initially going out and writing violations immediately. We were trying to educate, you know, so it wasn't like a total hardship for everybody. We gave everybody time to make that work. And so now moving forward, we can enforce what's on that. So the, yes and no, we can enforce some of it, but not.
And, and all of this parking behind, I don't have an RV and I don't have a boat, so I don't, I don't, I don't fall in this category. However, if I did, I would follow it, what you, okay. Is it strictly because of appearance or is it also a detriment or is it bad for, for, I mean, I know in some cases on a corner lot, I think we've talked about that where you couldn't see down the road type thing, but, but from the perspective of safety and for the roadways to be so, so that you can, so it's safer? Is there, does it? Does parking up front hinder that safety factor?
It can. It depends on the property.
Because I'm trying to figure out where we're going. Are we going with a citywide HOA here or are we, or do, are we doing something because it's, it actually, it actually is bad for traffic and for little children running? I'm, I'm asking, is that okay to ask that or is that a valid question?
My answer for you would, and I don't speak for everybody, because I think depending on who you ask, that answer might be different. It, it can be a line of sight concern in some cases, but it really depends on the neighborhood. And, and I mean this because some neighborhoods have larger lots and there's more room. If it's a smaller lot and there's not as much room, it could potentially be closer to the street and it could potentially create a, a line of visibility concern. So when you make a rule like this, I have to apply it citywide. I can't pick and choose without. So that's why in answering that question, I think it just depends on
Thank you.
Tom, I think when we came up with the RV ordinance, it was people in the neighborhoods complaining about a next-door neighbor that's parking a great big RV in the driveway right next to their house and they had to look at us the whole time all year long. I think that's where we came from to start with.
It is. We, we had a complaint from an individual that didn't like it. And so that's where that rule.
Kind of like going down the street.
So do we want to, in any potential changes, do we want to also address? It sounds like we want to address the oversized or commercial vehicles, but what about boats and boat trailers in addition to RVs? Do you guys want, if we're going to keep something like this, do we also want to include those? Because right now, I can't do anything about a trailer backed into a driveway. I can't do anything about a boat in a driveway. Yeah, currently, and, and we have had some complaints about those as well, but I, there's nothing, this only applies to RVs the way it's written unless we add in this green language here in line B. So that would be y'all's decision if you want that language added.
I don't have, personally, I don't have a problem with all these little two-wheel trailers. Little four-wheel trailers.
Lot more trailers.
Load, load, there's, they're all over, but I have a problem with big ones. That and it's, I, I passed this picture out last meeting where there's a neighbor down the street that has a big, tall, enclosed trailer. It's probably twenty, twenty, at least twenty feet long, and it's the biggest an RV. And it's not covered or you know, I don't think anybody has any boats on trailers that are offensive looking. You know, if you're gonna have one on a trailer in your driveway, it's usually a small boat and people can look past it or whatever. But I have a problem with the bigger trailers in residential lots.
So we, and in the commercial vehicle definition, it does have a, a length of twenty feet listed on it. So when I look at that again for you guys, we'll look at for the tractor-trailer portion. But do we want to say twenty foot in length is maximum? Like if you want to put a maximum on it other than the capacity of commercial vehicles, twenty appears to be kind of what you have currently and we could add that language in. If you look at B three where I highlighted over TBD in length, we could add over twenty feet in length to that language and that would keep the larger trailers.
Too much paper.
You're still on page six.
Still on six, okay.
Right, exactly. So so that's why we ask, if, if we're gonna put it, then I did include some, if you look on page five, under trailers and boats, I did include some standard lengths for you for reference. And we will, if we adjust it and add something here, we'll have to change the commercial vehicle definition of over twenty foot in length as well, but I'll make sure that happens if we do that.
As I said earlier when we were visiting, I would come up with a length and a height. Maybe, maybe not more than six feet tall or something, you know.
Yeah, we, we can do those currently if they're under junk vehicle, then we can do violations for that.
Campers, I've always heard if they're hooked up to electricity and water, that's, that's a no-no. Is that correct?
We, it does allow them to be hooked up, but not for the purpose of sleeping and living. So if we, if we notice it, we'll ask them and they'll usually show, like they'll usually open it and show us, no, no, I just because I have the fridge in here and to keep the temperature. And they, they show us most of the time, so we don't usually have any issues with that rule.
And that would be if it's up back behind the
You're asking about examples about like these boats parked there in the yard and stuff like that all the time.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you add the language under line B for boats and boat trailers, then, then something could happen with those, especially if you put a length on it. But if you don't add that language, then that is perfectly allowed and there's nothing I can do about that.
I would think if we're gonna do it to RVs, we should do it trailers and boats as well.
Okay, so keep that language.
Twenty feet, and that'd take care of most boats, because most of them are all over twenty feet.
Do we want to add a length for trailers and boats if we're gonna
Do you want anything parked in the front beside the vehicle?
Say again?
I mean, are we, do we want anything parked in the front of a house except for a vehicle and a car and a pickup?
I'm just looking at the example where they're parked in the yard.
I'm just saying because, okay, okay, so mine is, mine is eighteen foot long and I'm two foot under the twenty. I'm okay, my neighbor's gonna be okay with that being parked there because it's two foot shorter than whatever length you come up with.
So are you saying all boats?
I'm asking the question, I mean, what, because next thing you know, okay, these little water skis type thing, you can have four or five of those out there in the front because, and, and they're not too long. And I have, I, I have lots of them. And so I parked those, it's not a problem. I'm asking the question, are we, are we trying to just make, I, I don't, right now, I don't really have a dog in the race. Are we just trying to make so that it, it's not unsightly? And we want vehicles parked up there that you use for your everyday commute? And anything else that's just up there that it is, is not necessarily for that, shouldn't be there?
You know, an example, an example of what we have in mind, I think, is before I got on the council on Pecan Street, there was a old boat alongside the street in a grass yard on the side of the house, because the house was on a corner, and that boat had been there for years. And the tires on the trailer were flat and the weeds were growing up underneath it and the boat hadn't been moved in many years. They're sitting right there on the side of the street being an eyesore. And I think Ed Irwin sent me a picture the night y'all, the city decided to volunteer to go over there and pick that thing up, but it dumped or hauled it away.
So that's my point exactly. So let's just say that boat right there fell underneath the limit of length. It's still an eyesore.
What about you doing by registration, like abandoned cars?
That's how we do junk vehicles. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Like you have to have current registration on whatever's parked there at least, no matter how long it is.
We do that already.
That's an idea.
Yeah, because I, because I think, like you said, we're getting ourselves into deep with all the detail, all the stuff, and then it's gonna be hard for us to enforce. It's gonna be hard for you to enforce. It's gonna make it some of that difficult. Yeah, yeah. Now we're getting out of measuring tape. I mean, come on.
And is that with the tongue or not? I mean, come on.
Back it up a little bit, yeah.
Measuring wheels now?
Well, well, that's fair, but yeah, yeah, just something to make it easier is almost like there's gotta be some common sense applied to the fact of, of if something's an eyesore and it's been there too long type deal. You know, because that's really what we're kind of going after, right? Eyesore's been there too long. Looks like it's abandoned. It's got a whole pile of leaves on top of it or something. Hey, you know, you need to clean it up.
Storing your coolers that are
I don't know, just thinking out loud.
Do have, we do have ordinances for junk vehicles, things that are registered with the state where we can check license plates, and so this, this doesn't even matter at that point. Like if it's, even if you don't have this, if you have a boat that's falling apart or you have a motor vehicle. A camper is different because a camper is not an automobile with a license plate necessarily, the trailer. Am I wrong? I think I'm wrong on that.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm wrong on that. But as long as we can run the plates on it and then we can, we can do it under junk vehicle. Oh, I'm sorry. A trailer doesn't have the same, same setup that, it doesn't have like the drivable portion of it, and so it doesn't fall under junk vehicle for that reason. But we could take this and adjust it to just like not be junk-related. I mean, I could change your
I don't know.
Junk vehicle order. I mean, I think, so really what this stems from and where it comes from is one person was upset about an RV parked in their driveway. And so we were asked to put this forward about the time that I started, and so we kind of, we dropped it in, brought it forward and got it approved, but really what it, it, like it's so different. Like we understand maybe not wanting to have it in the side yard. If you're gonna allow them and you're gonna dictate side yard, side yard, like the setbacks, like maybe not on a corner side, right? That makes sense because it's in the line of sight. But again, if someone's complaining about an RV and then someone complains about a boat, then it kind of gets to, well, I can do something about this, but I can't do something about that. And so in this recommendation, it was more or less just trying to kind of find like a even balance. I don't think that this is an ordinance that is a priority for everybody, so it's not necessarily one I'm gonna send the team out to do right this second. It's one that if we get a complaint, we'll look at it. And I'm just being honest with you guys, based on our capacity, it's, I'm not clocking them on, on these. So we can, we can put, if you wanted to, if you want to take the TBD over TBD in length off, then it means that they can have any of those. There's no length requirements on it. So it would be unlawful for them to have any of these at a residence.
You know, one time we were talking, at one time we were talking about tonnage, and there was something that I read in one of these things about in excess of one and a half tons or something like that, carrying capacity or something, because you know, I don't think we really care about somebody having a four-wheeled sixteen-foot trailer that's empty parked in their driveway as opposed to something that'll haul a bulldozer, you know.
I don't know that my, I mean, I'm making assumptions here because I could not look at a trailer and tell you what its capacity is. Like we can literally break out the measuring wheel or the measuring tape and I know that but we could do that. I don't know if my guys could.
My trailers have a sticker on them saying what the capacity is.
You know, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. Homeowner might not be beautiful to somebody driving down the street.
I don't like the look of my boat looks, but I do.
With people would take pride in their property. That, that would solve the whole problem.
On this deal on, on B there where you say long-term, is there a definition then for long-term? That y'all have to deal with, like if somebody challenged you on long-term, what that means?
So we have it above there and a period of time not to exceed twenty-four hours. But it protects them, it protects them from like, if they're loading and unloading, then they're fine.
Like over the weekend or something. Yeah, okay.
Just so you guys know, when we see stuff like this that's hard to enforce, we we are, we talk to people. We're not, my guys are not out there, like this is really not something that we're out there. I agree. Yeah, my, my motto is let's not create undue hardship because that's bad press for you guys. And even if it's my
Confrontation may lead to problems for chief over there or somebody. I mean, you know, and, and we don't want that, you know? At least that's my thoughts.
Help me on this. Okay, so we're gonna, I feel like, I feel like we're okay with adding the green language. Maybe like marinate on the length and just someone email me what you think, I guess. Jeff, it sounds like you've been designated as a spokesperson for length and capacity.
My question is a comment. It, it's, to me, it seems like we're coming up with something that's very convoluted and, and so I'm asking, I ask it again, what are we trying to, to accomplish here? Are we, is it, and, and I know what it is. I think I do. Each different one, it depends on who lives there, is gonna have a problem with it or not. So over here, it's never gonna happen. Over there, it's gonna happen. And, and it's so, so it becomes complicated unless I know clearly what's defined, what we're trying to accomplish here and is it keep our camp a beautiful, and beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I mean, it's, it's really, it's a tough place for you to be.
Tough place for us to be too.
Yes. It's not clear to me what we're trying to accomplish. I do know why it started tonight, you cleared that up.
Yes, you can always call.
I just wish people that we do what's right. If they're gonna have a boat and they're gonna clean it up, that's fine, but if they're gonna leave it there all the time, no bueno.
I think, I think it needs to be something that's, that's more of a, it needs to be something that's unsightly, that's long-term, that's, that's extended period of time that's causing, yeah.
Some of the ugly, ugly, ugly ups.
Yeah, but it needs to be pretty, pretty excessive. I think for us to go, you know, I mean, I don't know, you know, because, because it's gotta be within reason. We got it's, it's people's property. They're, they're, they're living their life. They're doing things and, and you know, we don't know what all the story is and I don't know if we want to know, you know, because it's just a lot, a lot for us to deal with. And we shouldn't be in that business of of getting that deep into their business, you know, because it's not our business, you know?
I was complaining to Crystal about commercial activity in residential neighborhoods. She said, we really don't have anything that covers outside commercial activity in residential neighborhoods other than allowing, and we do allow people to have garage sales every so often and whatnot, and that's but I was complaining about one particular yard where the guy was working on cars all the time, having jacked up, someone would be jacked up in the front yard for months on end. And I thought he was probably working for other people's vehicles, since I think he's a mechanic to start with. And Crystal told me, no, they checked the license plate. He owns those vehicles. Well, it's hard to tell a guy he can't work on a car in his driveway.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, what do you do with it in this case? He's got one there all the time, sometimes two or more jacked up out there and they stay there for a very long time alongside the street.
Right.
So we are not gonna talk about commercial ventures tonight. That
I'm talking about the overall concept of what we're trying to do. I mean, if we're talking about in the overall concept, if we think about, oh, broken down, RV in a vacant in the overall concept, if we think about, oh, broken down, RV in a vacant lot next to somebody's house. And it's unsightly. Somebody owns a lot and they've got a a mobile home sitting out there that nobody's lived in in years for years and we try to clean that kind of stuff up. I think that's the overall concept that we're trying to come up with in all these things.
Well, I will I will review this a little more and um get with the team on some of that and see what we can do for with regards to the unsightliness version. For the sake of time, I'm gonna move you to the next one, parking of vehicles for sale. Some possible edits for this one that might help some eliminate some of the challenges is removing the special use permit requirement. It would mean that you don't have to go through that process of getting a special use permit. Uh, determining if you want to use a max number of vehicles uh for any given period of time. For example, two, uh legal has cautioned us against this though, so I do want to put a note because he uh he says that if we're gonna put a count on a how many they can have out there, then we need to be able to back up why we're using that number. And so if we can't back that number up, then we don't put a limit on it um in regards to this. Uh, also you could potentially add language to deny shared parking areas. This is something that has come up in conversation where like, for example, the Zoya parking lot is a multi-tenant property. And so if you allowed, let's say, two per commercial space, are you allowing two for each unit or are you allowing two for the one parcel? Um, and so if you took language out to deny that for shared parking, then it would just be two for the one place. Um, and then also verifying what types of vehicles you guys want to be offered for sale because there are different places where you have RVs for sale, we have boats for sale, we have jet skis for sale, we have four wheelers for sale. And some of that stuff is CSA, that's protected, that's none of that is ever affected by this stuff. But if you want to keep this this on the books, we need to figure out some of the answers to these concerns here. Or we just take it off the table altogether and people can just sell vehicles wherever they want. Either way, it's fine. I just need to know what direction.
Can we make it simple and say you can sell vehicles if you have a letter on the windshield or wherever with permission from the property owner, not not the tenant, but the property owner, the taxpayer of the property. If the taxpayer gives a person permission to sell the vehicle and it's the permission is displayed, I don't have a problem with it. Cause they're the ones paying tax on that property.
I'm gonna have to ask my team about that, but I wrote it down to discuss them. I don't I don't know how they would enforce that, but I can check with them. I don't want to make promises I can't keep, so. Any other thoughts on it?
How much of a problem is it? Uh, we're talking about like people, in your case, you're saying people go to the HEB parking lot or something like that? Or Walmart parking lot and just leave their vehicle there with a sign on the window? Is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
I'm talking about you've gotta have per permission from the taxpayer of the property. You can't just go to somebody's property because you don't know who they are and just leave your vehicle there and do it. That's not right.
No.
But I mean, I'll just bring up, for instance, like Tristan Cooley owns the old Lax. That's his property. If he wants to let somebody uh sell a vehicle there as long as he gave them permission, I don't have a problem with it. Same with Darryl Hopper. If he's paying taxes on that property, if he wants and I don't think he'd let a junky vehicle there. Nobody would. But I mean, just like the old Stanley's parking lot where people just park them out there without permission. I that's not right.
With the time, park them out there without permission. I see you saying you had multiple tenants.
Right, as long as you have property permission from the taxpayer of the property, I'll put it that way. I don't have a problem with them cuz it's it's their property. I don't like telling people what they can do with their own property.
It's not a whole lot different than uh used car lots.
So are we leaning towards deleting this section? I mean, we could redact, like just take the whole thing out. I will say that when it comes to enforcing owners, like um owner permission, sometimes those cars come and go faster than the guys could even valid, like they may put them out there one weekend and sell them and we would never know if they had permission in the windows.
I hope they can celebrate.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why we're in this business.
So we're leaning towards deleting then it sounds like?
But I mean, I'm open to feedback.
My personal thing is delete it. People do what they want to with their property.
Feel the same way?
Who brought this up to start with? Wasn't it uh?
It was another complaint. Yeah, it was just another complaint anywhere it's and they're all over and so.
I mean, my thoughts are too is if it if it becomes a, if it continues to become an issue or it comes back up, maybe we bring it back up or bring it if it becomes an issue, but I don't know if it, I mean, does anybody, do y'all get complaints of this here recently? Is it often or? Oh, okay.
It hasn't been as bad since that rule went in place. I think people have been, and we also worked with Zoya to put up um no parking overnight or vehicle will be I don't, I don't. I didn't put it in the paper that you can sell your
And the other thing too, so we have some we use permits out there for tire shops and all that. They can't, they have to clean up their whole property at the end of the day. That's what's supposed to happen with the new maybe not that grandfathered one, but the new. But I have a vehicle or they have a vehicle there and all they have to do is slap a sale sign on it and it can stay out there as long as it needs to.
You know, once again, what I was saying just a little while ago, the the big issue is when somebody takes a residential lot and parks more than one car there for sale. Sometimes they got two or three or four sitting on their in their yard for sale in a commercial area, a residential area, excuse me, I said it wrong. You know, somebody does that in a residential area where they're selling multiple cars all the time, then it's an issue for the neighbors, but otherwise it's probably not.
Well, so
The banks do that. The banks put them out there for sale. I mean
That's true.
That's repossessed though. Yeah, yeah.
We do have a portion of that in there. Number, if you look on page seventeen, number two, um, that's that limits on residential properties more than one. You can only have one vehicle listed for sale on your property at a time. I mean, but you could just move that sign every day if you wanted. I don't know that that really helps. There's ways around that too.
Teeth into it, but not these things are tough, I guess, to find a happy medium, but.
Thing about may maybe not more than one in a residential area.
Maybe so, yeah.
Okay, we could keep that. That one's pretty harmless. Easy to do. Okay, but we're thinking for a commercial, we just take it off the table for right now. Okay, that's easy enough.
David was saying something to the effect that you would let the owner of the property manage that area of his, I don't know how you say that, but I mean
So
I mean, I know that's hard with the multi use deal, I mean, the multi commercial.
If they have this sign that says that they can tow if you're parked overnight, then they have the authority to tow. So we would encourage them to put that sign up. So that if someone's doing that in their parking lot and they don't want it and we're calling them and telling them we're getting complaints or something like that and they put that up, that gives them the authority to have those vehicles towed as property owners. They can do that and we can give them that guidance. So if you took this off the table and we had issues with that, same thing like as the way, like I said.
Up there and just park them there without permission, kind of like putting a campaign sign somewhere without permission.
But okay, so that gives me some better direction on that one. And then last but not least, uh, the question of parking in the grass. So this is not something we have a rule with. Um, and from now on, if I get a rule, I'm going to have a discussion with you guys in a very, very short manner, not all three at one time. Uh, but to get better feedback before we try to put a rule out. And so that's what this is for. We do not have a rule for parking in the grass uh at this time. There is on page twenty four through twenty five uh with the green being the added text, some potential language you could use. And the other thing I wanted to note is we did do a survey of other local areas and some other cities that the Planning and Zoning Commission are having me utilize as examples for their Unified Development Code rewrite uh on page three. And so parking in the grass is is not a very popular one. Only Sugarland has this rule. Um, so that's out of Wharton, Edna, East Bernard, Bay City, Eagle Lake, Needville, Victoria, Cuero, Buta, Wimberly, Fredericksburg. And so we would if we want to do it, we can, just so I know someone has asked before if other areas are doing it and so that's there for reference. Is there a desire to make this rule?
You know, we talked about this uh that other meeting and somebody brought up a point that's very well made that uh in a lot of parts of the town, those houses were built with a driveway that held when a garage that held one car because that's all most people had back then. And uh now the husband and wife each have a car, one of their kids or maybe more than one of her kids have a car and they gotta have someplace to put it so they park parallel, uh, sometimes in the grass and all of that. And I think we have to give some understanding to the fact that's gonna be really hard to enforce all over town. If you've got, you know, one car driveway and two cars that live there, you can't park necessarily park one behind the other because they're leaving at different times and it's a big issue.
So this does not sound like a popular direction to go.
I don't like messing with people.
I think I think this one's gonna cause a lot of
You just see, this will, this is how I intend to do this in the future. So when I bring it to you guys, if you guys tell me no way, Jose. So we just this, that's where that one stops and it won't come back up. I mean, unless you guys wanted to, but okay. I think that's it. I'm pretty sure I'm good. I will revisit these with my team who actually does the enforcement so that we could figure out logistically how that would work for you all. Um, and I will give you all your next fifteen minutes to take a break before your council meeting. Thank you guys for humor.
Quiet, dude. You're reading over there? Stay quiet.
Some people like to park sideways in front of your car.
Oh.
The pickup business picks up.
We will, yeah. Courtney, did you say when grandson got his first deer?